Lewitan.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Administration meeting dated March 11th, 2010. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next discussion. Budget 2010, 2011. Wally and Brad, I will turn that over to you gentlemen.
Let me go back to, let me go back to last week, sort of a, bring you up to date on what happened last week and where we start. The budget that we gave to you and which is in front of you finishes the 2011 fiscal year with an ending surplus of $53,000 and change. We talked at several meetings about the potential, quote, "hole" in the budget, the $870,000 that the state either is giving us IOUs for this fiscal year or may cut from our budget if the governor's budget is approved. Nothing has changed since last week to change those numbers. So, as we sit today, there's a potential shortfall in the operating revenues of $816,000. Last week, the staff identified, from what I'm going to call the Plan B alternative, a reduction of $75,000 in the Lakota planning study, bills that were paid in fiscal year 10 that we had anticipated in '11, so we can take that out of the '11 budget. And a reduction in the '11 budget of $85,000 pursuant to a motion that the council approved two or three weeks ago. And then there was a motion that was made, seconded, and approved on a five to three vote to cut out of the capital fund and operating fund of $9,000 in the light tower, $40,000 in the concrete flooring in the Public Works Building, $350,000 in the window wall replacement in City Hall, $80,000 for police lockers, and $240,000 in decorative street lighting. When you zero those out of the budget, we now have, with the budget right in front of you, an ending anticipated surplus at the end of 2011 of $62,000 and change. So, we've already cut that hole more than we needed to, and even if the worst-case scenario comes to pass, that is continued IOUs from the state and a reduction throughout next year as a result of the governor's budget, we've still got that covered and we're in the black by $62,000. And if you queue up the next one. There was a motion ma, there was also a motion made, seconded and passed on a four to three vote that we restore some of the potential cuts in what I called my Plan B option. Now, we already talked about the cut in the Lakota, and my Plan B option identified initially a little over $500,000, $550,000 in cuts. We just talked about the Lakota study, which we can cut out. We talked about the brush collection, which we've cut out. And the motion that was made is that we take out of the potential cuts or restore back and not consider any more. $19,000 for the crossing guards, $20,000 for the gypsy moth spraying, restore half of the funding for the IML conference, restore the manager's conferences to keep his credentialing, restore the social services in the police department, and restore safety equipment in the police department. So, now, if we're looking back at Plan B, there's only really $314,000 out there on the table. Everything else has already been cut or has already been restored. And if you want to go back to Plan B, we're down to $314,000 as opposed to the $557,000. So, as a result of the motions made last week, that's where we are tonight. Any questions before we get into the budget itself?
I thought we were also keeping the District 7 after-school, the $15,000.
I was a little bit unclear. I went back and listened to the tape twice, and I heard "social services," and I was a little unsure as to whether that also encompassed the District 7 after-school. If you want to make that as a motion before we get in there to restore that, that's about $15,000.
Do we need to make a motion, or? All right, I'd like to make a motion to keep...
This is the chairman. There's a couple other issues that I'd like to address on that before, if you want to make one big motion.
One big one, yeah, we can do that. Alderman Wesley.
Again, I stated I would not cut any safety issues in this Category B proposed budget that came to us. I do not see the mosquito spray put back in here. That is a safety issue to me for spraying for mosquitoes in this community. The fact is, there's been proven fact that in our area, West Nile virus has been found in our community already, and to drop a mosquito spray is not feasible. So, that, I would ask that to be reinstated into this Plan B and put back on there.
That's fine. The motion was a little bit vague with respect to safety issues, and we tried to infer from the motion what exactly you meant by that. And I had thought that you meant the specific line item with respect to safety equipment for the police department. But if you all want to make a motion that we restore and hold sacred, the District 7 and the mosquito spraying, I'd be glad to, Alderman Police, I'd be glad to take that motion and incorporate it into our notes.
You know, I was also looking at, and I don't know how everybody else felt, on the storm sewers maintenance. I mean, isn't that kind of critical to keep those maintained? We're going to reduce $20,000 off storm sewer maintenance. I don't know, Mayor, would you think it'd be best if, as we went through the book, that whatever department this applied to, that's where we put it back in?
Maybe we ought to do that when it comes to that tab and talk about that one then.
Because, you know, we make the blanket statement here, that was one of my things last week, just go through the, go through the book and the moski, wherever the mosquito one is, no, we put it in. The storm sewers, I mean, I think we should, but, you know, I can't speak for everybody else. The mayor just said I'm the chairman. We'll go through the book.
Okay.
And as we get to these, some of these line items, if any Alderman wants to take it out or put it in.
That's fine.
That's where we'll make the...
That's fine, and we'll keep, we'll keep a running tally.
Do you have a copy of, I didn't bring the copy of Plan B?
I have a copy right here. Do you want a copy? I'll make one for you real quickly.
I would like to see that again, but if you want to do the meeting, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Wilson?
Just for clarification for staff down here, are we going to assume that an item is to be included in the budget unless it's explicitly removed or it's removed unless it's added? Which way do you want, do you want to do this as a, as an addition or as a deduction?
My thing is, as we go through it, if we're doing administration, we look at the administration page, something, you've got $24,000 in cuts. Everybody likes those, okay, those are gone. Go to the city clerk, got some cuts, yes, no, either, then it stays or it goes. This way, otherwise, we're going to try and generalize the whole thing, we're going to start like last week again.
Okay, so we'll assume that Option B is implemented unless explicitly added back?
Okay, so as...
Is that, is that what I'm getting?
Right. That works. Alderman Coles?
Yeah, Brad, if it's in, if it's in the book, it should stay in the book, we shouldn't cut it out, even though it's in Plan B, or we want it back in.
Well, that's why I want to know which way we're going with this. Are we assuming it's in?
What's the easiest for you right now? We go through the book and we can take them out.
The easiest would be to take them out.
Yeah, it's easier to take them out.
It'd be easier to take them out.
Than put them in.
Okay. All right, where do you want to start? Total overview? Overview all funds? So, you want to wait for Mr. Douthwaite?
Prefer to wait a moment for Manager Douthwaite to get back. I think he was getting Plan B for at least a couple different Aldermen, so.
I'm sorry, Alderman Shockey.
Alderman Wesley mentioned about the mosquito abatement. Now, are you talking about the original $55,000 or the revised $43,000? Because we didn't take the whole thing away.
We took out a whole spray in that budget.
So, we have, what, four sprays instead of five? Is that the idea?
We added four last year.
We added four for last year, so we went back down to three, and I don't agree taking the four out there.
So, four, four sprays is $55,000?
And maybe I'm wrong there.
The $43,000 that was what it was dropped to from 55 is what Clark's contract is currently as it sits. The $55,000 was a contingency amount, or the other $12,000 added to the 43 was a contingency should the city need to do a additional citywide spraying, a harborage spraying, or anything additional due to mosquito pressure for the year. It gave us a cushion over and above the contract if we needed to do a additional citywide spray. We've had that built into the budgets of all the years past. Again, we just took that cushion out and, and put the level right at the contract amount, which is $43,000.
So, it seems then that the 43 would be okay, and if we did get more money from the state, then the manager can come back and say, well, we have another $12,000 we can put in if we need it later on. We don't need it now.
Here's my debate on that. First off, my debate is, here's the...
Well, we're going to get to that, guys.
Well, that's fine.
Let's, we can have a discussion once we get to it. Ready to go?
The game plan that I sent out to you all tonight, tab by tab, some of them are going to be real easy to get through. And let's start with the tab that says, "Overview of All Funds." And it's basically pages 67 and 68. This is a macro cash flow analysis of each fund. On the top of page 67, on the General Fund, we have an estimated beginning fund balance of $10.6 million. Going one to the right, we have an estimated revenues of $12.1. We have proposed expenditures of $12.0 for that surplus I mentioned of $53,000 and an ending fund balance of $10.69 million. And a note at the end that that meets our fund balance policy. And each of the various funds are listed the same way in terms of just a cash flow projection for this fiscal year. I'll answer any questions that you might have on those two pages, and if you have any, don't have any questions, we can move on.
Any questions on these two pages? Next.
Next one is the tab that's marked, "General Fund Summary." The first page is a quick outline of our personnel schedule and our general fund graph. And then on page 70 is a, 70, 71 is a detail of our general fund revenues. Again, all those numbers total back to the, the overview in the prior tab. Then on page 72, we have an expenditure sheet by department, and I note that in the general fund, the percent change from this, this year to next is only 1.98%. And Brad, what, page 73, is that Water Sewer Fund or is that overall? Revenues in the general fund by, by type on page 73. And 74, and again, that's just pretty much the summary of where we are.
Anyone have questions on these? Actually, I do. On Contractor Registration, page 70, we've got an increase on contractor registration when it's not a lot of building going on. I don't see how we're going to give a, an increase. That's under permits and fees, last item.
That's really trending upward a little bit. In '09, we had revenues of $31,000. We budgeted in '10, $35,000. We're projecting this year $40,000, and we're just estimating next year $45,000. That's an estimate. It's on a, it's on a trend basis.
Even with the slow construction going on and whatnot, why increase the number?
One of the things that, that factors into that is everybody right now is going for the lowest price that they can get. And even if you do one project in town, you have to register as a contractor. So, we're seeing an increase of one-time contractors, if you call it, because they're the lowest for this particular person that calls. So, as these foreclosures are getting turned around, people are having to remodel their houses, there's been a lot of one-time contractors coming through. And as the foreclosure market continues to thaw, even as slow as it is, we're anticipating there to be more of these one-time contractors or do two or three houses on a block, then, then move on. And so, that's why it's kind of continuing to trend upward a little bit is, you know, the foreclosure thaw and the one-time contractors just getting a low, low price job and moving on, so.
All right. The next one, same section, building permits. This number jumps way up. Where, where do we expect this, big influx?
Wooddale Station.
But they said they're coming in.
They've filed the plans.
But it's already in?
It's in the works, and they have every indication that they're going to start building. Mr. Forrest has met with them several times. I spoke to him two days ago. He says that project's online and ready to go.
Oh, good. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
We, we have a definite commitment for them.
Well, there's no commitment until they put the shovel in the ground, but we're, we have enough of a commitment to indicate that they're going to go ahead and build this year, and we can anticipate some building permits.
The other two buildings?
Yes, sir.
But they haven't even closed out the first building?
They, they still plan, they've come in with plans for their next two buildings.
Is that for final review?
Excuse me?
For final, for review?
Yeah.
I would be pretty worried about that permit fee being that high because simple reason, economy could go down the tubes again, or they don't get funding for that. I have to agree, that, that's pretty high. I mean, you're looking at, have to increase there, but, I mean, if you feel that's going to happen, but...
I, I can't, I can't guarantee you anything. What, what this budget does is look out to April of next year, and I can't tell you what the economy is going to be like next year. We're, we're putting these numbers together based upon our best estimates. If you don't feel comfortable with that and you want to knock it down $100,000, I mean, it's, it's not going to have any, it's not going to have any significant impact on our ability to deliver services. It's just a number.
Right, but when, when we do the budgets for each department, I mean, this number like cushions that department's number, you know, could skew the numbers. We're looking at $600,000 coming in, we might only get in $300,000 or $200,000.
We, we might. And we put that number in based upon the information that I've got from the building official, and he says, "These guys are ready to rock and roll." You can bank on it. I mean...
Right.
That's our best, you know, based upon the numbers we had and the information we had when we put this budget together, that's the best information we had from our, our building folks. If you're not comfortable with it and you just want to make an arbitrary slash of a couple hundred thousand, again, it's not going to make a noticeable impact in terms of the services we deliver. It's just a, it's an estimate. All of these numbers are estimates.
Anything else on that? Alderman Lewitan?
Alderman, I mean, sorry, Manager Douthwaite, could you explain to me why you say that's just a number? Because if you have a $62,000 balance in the budget and then you take $100,000 out, then you're running a deficit. So, can you really dismiss it as just a number?
If I didn't have any cash in the bank, no, I couldn't dismiss it as just a number. But, you know, we, we're dealing with numbers that are amorphous out there, you know? Is the state going to go deadbeat on us with respect to $500,000 that they may give us IOUs on? I don't know. If they don't, if they pay us off, that more than makes up for that just a number. If Governor Quinn's budget doesn't go through as proposed and we don't lose that $350,000 potential loss and income tax, that's just a number. You know, we've budgeted some, some anticipated labor cost increases in this year's budget that are still subject to labor negotiations, and those numbers may change, and that's just a number. The only number I feel confident about is the $10.6 million we have cash in hand to shield ourselves and cushion ourselves against a one-term or one-time downturn. That's the only number I've got this hard. Everything out there is, you know, we're, we're making estimates. And again, I can't tell you what's going to happen in April of, of 2011. All these numbers are, are just estimates. That's what a budget's all about.
Alderman Coles?
Every year, we go through this. This is all estimates, everything is estimates, because there is no way we could put a determined amount in the book. So, if they come through with this building, you'll have $600,000. If they don't come through with the building, it'll be $200,000, and there ain't nothing you can do. It's only guess, it's a guesswork. It's a guesswork and work in numbers. And if you, you can't see that, then I don't know how we can resolve this. We'll be going over everything six or seven times.
Well, me personally, I feel more comfortable if we drop the number down just in case, because I remember a few years ago, there was a big influx of permits, and I think that was unexpected, little over a million dollars, and some of that money went towards the train station and whatnot. Some of it did, correct? That economic money that, from those permits, 1.1 or 1.2 million that we received?
Correct. Some of that money was used to fund the now closed Economic Development Fund that was in place for three or four years. The money went to various projects, some of it went to land acquisition, a little bit of it did go, I believe, to the train station, and some of it just went back into the, and some of it just went back into the general fund when it got closed out. So, it gets put around on various projects.
Me, and me personally, just my opinion, that $600,000, you know, I understand the guys put into plans, and if they put into plans for approval, I would imagine they're going to build, you could probably take that number, but I'd feel more comfortable if it was, if we dropped the number down about $100,000, $150,000 myself. I don't know how the council feels. Do we need to make a motion on something like that, Mayor? If we're going to do something like this?
If, you can do a motion at the end to approve the budget, recommend approval of budget. If you want to do motions as you're going along with each section, you can do that as well.
Alderman Wesley?
You know what? I would rather leave it that way, but then if it doesn't come in, then the building department's going to have to pull those ropes back on projects or, or some of those items in the budget, put a halt on them. I mean, if this permit fee does not come in, what's in our budget, we may have to stop. Because if you're basing this permit fee, which I'm, I'm gathering it versus it when they put their budget together, that they're going to get that kind of money in the building department or back in the general fund? And I'm sure they did their budget based on part of that money coming into the building department.
No, they did not. The, the amount of money we get in revenues from the building permits are completely unrelated to the amount of money we spend in the building department. They're two completely unrelated issues. We don't fund the Community Development Department and the Building Division based upon building permits, engineering permits, inspection fees. They're absolutely unrelated. This is money that goes right into the general fund, and it's completely unrelated from the expenditures that the Community Development Department needs to operate.
Nice question. Bottom line, if we put $609,000 into the general fund and we pass the budget and we only get $400,000, the general fund is now short $200,000. So, I mean, I know, I know we have the reserves, but as far as I'm concerned, it's not there.
It's, if we only get $400,000 instead of $600,000, we've got a $200,000 turnaround in our cash balance.
Right.
And instead of being $60,000 to the good or $140,000 to the bad.
Okay. Mayor Johnson?
Under intergovernmental, I noticed you have the dispatch fees from the fire district. You don't have anything from Bensonville on the income, same page, number 70.
I don't think we came up with agreement with that.
33010. I take it that's because it's not finalized yet, you're not putting the income or expenses in?
We are more confident that we're going to get these building permit fees than we are right now that we're going to get revenue from an intergovernmental agreement with Bensonville. If we get an intergovernmental agreement with Bensonville and we make money, then that number will go up that we haven't anticipated yet. That's still in the works, and I'm not confident enough about it yet. We haven't even started talking dollars. We're just talking concepts right now.
Well, nobody else seems to have any objection, other than Alderman Wesley and myself, on lowering that number, so.
He said he agreed with it.
Hmm? Yeah, he's the only one that agreed with me, but... Then we're going to leave the $600,000, go to the next.
If there are any other questions on page 70 and 71, then we go to the tab marked, "Police." Chief, you want to come on up? And as he's coming up, I'll just go through these pages real quickly. Page 106, under that tab, is an organizational chart for the police department. Page 107, 108, 109, 110 are a narrative on accomplishments and goals and objectives. And I'm not going to go through that page by page unless there are any questions on the narrative. No questions. And page 111 is the target level for the police department. And they're asking for $5,067,000 next year, over $5,45,000 this year. That's an increase in their budget of 0.4%, four tenths of 1% with the same staffing levels, basically a status quo budget. They are not asking for anything over and above the target level. So, then on page 112 and 113, you see the line items for the department. If there are any questions on those line items?
Anybody have any questions? Alderman Lewitan?
Do we still have a citizens' education program?
If you're talking about the Citizens Police Academy?
Yes.
Yeah. We still have that. That is not an event that is run until after the summer and fall, if we have enough interest.
It's run when? In the fall?
In the fall.
And how much is, how much do you need, where is it in the budget?
It is not in the budget. It's embedded in just our regular operating costs. It is not a cost center, per se.
What would you say it costs to run that, including the website?
There is no website for it. I think you're confusing the citizens', the CERT program. Totally different deal. The CPA, the Citizens Police Academy, does not have a website. The citizens', the CERT group does have a website, it did have a website, it no longer has that. And that is embedded in two different locations. One is underneath the Emergency Services, and also there's grant money that's obtained from that.
Want to know page?
All right, I'll take the website out of the question. About what do you estimate that it costs to run that? With your, it's mostly manpower, right?
We get about $3,000 from the state on a grant. We have another line item here for $5,000 that we usually don't go through altogether. That's for contingencies.
You got a good showing. Do you feel it's worth the program?
Well, right now, we're going through some reorganization. There's been some, some issues with some of the members. I know they're trying to do a recruitment right now out of the high school to get some younger people involved with it. Once again, that's just an ongoing process.
Okay, so it's about $5,000, and you get a grand of three, so it's about a net cost of 2,000 for the Police Department to run it. And you got a pretty good showing, so it's worth continuing. Yes?
That cost also includes our supplies for emergency purposes that we might need.
So you recommend continuing it at about a 2,000?
At this point, there's no reason not to.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Coles, you were first.
With only four tenths of a percent increase, I don't see why there should be any questions at all. With four tenths of a percent, because that's all it amounts to. So, I don't think there should be any questions at all, but there will be.
Alderman Wesley?
Ray Wesley, sorry.
With your Plan B here, what line items were cut from the budget that was on Plan B? Understand my question? Okay.
Crossing guard, emergency service.
Under education, oh, excuse me.
Give me page numbers.
In Plan B, the initial Plan B knocked out 19,000 for crossing guards, but you put that back in. Under the line item that says Telephone/Alarm Line, that's the first line under Contractual Services, we initially budgeted 25,500. We've knocked that back by 4320 to 21,180. Under Maintenance for Buildings, which is 1, 2, 3, four lines down from that, we had 25,730. We've reduced that back down to 18,270. On the one that says Maintenance Agreement, we had 22,890. We've knocked that back down to 18,380. Under the Township Social Service, we had 11,520. We kicked it back to 5,760, and there's already been discussion about a full restoration of that. And under Education and Training, we had $30,000, and we knocked that back to $17,700. And
Can I?
The reasons for that, under the explanation, were a reduction of lines due to a new phone system, elimination of the Door Service Maintenance Agreement, 50% in reduction in in-house counseling, and reduction in training. And then going on, under the Maintenance of Other Equipment, which is the middle of page, of page 112. Maintenance of Other Equipment? Okay. About a third of the way down on page 113, we started with 4217. We've reduced that to 3527.
Hang on, hang on. You said 113?
We've reduced it from 4217 to 3527.
Okay.
Where's your Books and Subscriptions Program? Just above that, under Books and Publications, we started with 630. We've reduced that to 280.
What page are you on?
Page 113, near the top. Says Books and Publications.
Okay.
Page 113.
In the budget.
Third line down on page 113, Books and Publications, we started with $630. We reduced it to 280. About six lines down, it says Detectives' Expenses. We started with 3375, reduced to 3140. A couple lines up, we had photo supplies at $1,500. We reduced to $1,000. And under Emergency Services, which is a few lines up from that, that's what we were just talking about for the CERT training. We started with 5,000, and we reduced it to 3,400. And then finally, in Conferences and Meetings, which is the second line under the heading of Other Expenditures, close to the bottom of page 113, we started with $2,500. We reduced that down to 1880. And finally, the District 7 After School Program, initially had been budgeted at 15,000, and we zeroed that out, and I believe there was discussion about restoring that. So those are the line items that the chief was able to give, to scrub from his budget from the first go-round to the second go-round. And I'm going to ask him to answer any questions about the impact of those specific line items on his operation.
Okay. Roughly, that comes out to about $32,585. The biggest impact that we're going to be having here, that we're going to be seeing, is training. There are things that we are doing with our CLEA program that are going to be significantly impacted by deleting that. I have my dithers about that. However, I think that when we were asked to look and scrub this again, we were faced with some unusual circumstances, and they needed some unusual action. If we're reconsidering that, I think that that's a place where we definitely have to go to restore the level of participation, which we would be comfortable with maintaining our standards and performance evaluations. The other things that we talked about over here are things that we believed we can live with in light of the circumstances, and it was our part to try to make things work in light of the circumstances that were given to us. Any questions on particularly any other accounts that you might have?
I do have some questions. Tasers and supplies, is that under other?
That isn't covered in the general account. That's another fund. I think it's Equipment Replacement Fund, which is covered later on in the book. If you want to jump there, we can go there.
I want to make sure that's, that's in there, and it wasn't cut.
That was one of those things that originally we looked on putting aside. I know that we reconsidered, I believe, in that category. Also, the radars, the ones that are in the cars currently are 10 years old. We were going to cannibalize 50% of that to get them to work, and that was one of the things we were looking to restore along with the tasers. The tasers are significant with regards to less-than-lethal force. Also, the training issue with regards to the actual discharging of that, so that each officer has hands-on practical experience in the training file, so that if it is used and its approach with regards to liability, they can say that they were taught about it, they were demonstrated it, they showed proficiency with it, so that we can cover ourselves for any future liability.
One more?
One more. I do have a list of things that I want to make sure that it is in this budget for house safety, too, and.
So pretending the Plan B here?
Yep.
Because everything's in unless it's this Plan B.
Other equipment, like radars, is that other equipment?
Underneath the Equipment Replacement Fund.
See, so I don't know what other equipment is.
So, and Chief, on Plan B here, police operating equipment, you're reducing 27,000. What are we getting rid of?
We were getting rid of the chairs in the facility. We had that in there for $4,000. There was also a deletion of accident investigation of about 3799, I believe, was for a black box recorder, a vent recorder. There was also, we offset, we originally had $40,000 to help offset the cost for the camera replacement. That was increased by $5,000, which helped put the liability to the fund less. We actually had gotten more money back with regards to our DUI tech fund, which then allows us to be able to purchase equipment for the enforcement of traffic laws that are relevant to impaired drivers. We also had another 3,216 that we reduced in that fund, which was recaptured from the courts for the Court Supervision Fund. So that was actually for the squad car replacement program. So we had zero effect on the monies that we required from the city. I believe that was 83,216, and we actually reduced that liability totally to the city. And then we had the radar issue, which I just spoke about, and the TASER issue. So, with restoring the tasers and the radars, we're then helping that back up. Trying to think if I forgot anything else on that. I believe I was at, 3,700 was the big one, and that was on the accident reconstruction equipment.
So my question is, is the TASER radar in this budget without the cuts?
Yes, unless you direct us to take it out, it will stay in.
So, let me ask something. So the 26,990 leaves all that in, or?
Yes, it leaves it all in. All the stuff the chief just talked about.
And just, okay, something else?
One more thing about the training, education, and training. You mentioned about the, what do you call it? CLEA?
Right. Initially, initially in Plan A, that was listed at $30,000. After we were approached by the manager for an alternative, we reduced that by $12,300 to bring it down to $17,700. That's where I spoke of previously with regards to the impact it would have on our accreditation process, our interrogatories, where we have to appear before the CLEA Commission in, I think it's late July, for our onsite, which is going to be occurring the end of this month. Also, for the training of an additional CLEA manager, our current manager's been doing it for six years. We use this as a training function and also a leadership building function, and we would like to get that next manager trained at an event in November. And then lastly, we, I shouldn't say lastly, next, we have one of our sergeants, and based on our CLEA training matrix, all of our command staff goes to professional enrichment courses, which are either offered by the Southern Police Institute, the University of Louisville, or the Northwestern University Staff and Command Traffic Institute. That's a $3,500 cost for a 10-week program for that particular sergeant. And then we also have a hostage negotiator training course for 450, which was being cut, along with a APCO training for our communications supervisor, and that was part of his training matrix for his CLEA proofs for the communications center. And that amounted to $8,850. And we had originally done that on the Plan B cut, and we would be looking to probably have that come back in if at all possible, so that we can maintain these levels of accreditation.
I just want to make sure that this, the training and the education will be reinstated. I think that's important for safety and to make sure that, keep our accreditation up. I guess I'll go to Bradford.
Alderman Wesley?
I have one question, well, actually, two questions. The, we just was, had a notice from the mayor last week about a bill that was down in Springfield about the intersection on 83 and Oak Meadows Drive. I know we looked at where that could go, since the county did not cooperate too much with us with the red light camera up on Thorndale and 80, Thorndale and Wooddale Road. My question, maybe the mayor answers, or maybe the chief answers this, have we processed, in the process of looking at that intersection for that red light camera, and to the mayor, how far are we to that bill being passed where we could execute that section?
How about if we go to the mayor first for the status on the legislative action?
It is passed the House side. The legislature is now in recess. Carol Pankow has picked it up on the Senate side, and the anticipation it was passed the Senate and then be signed by the governor. But it's only passed the House at this point.
Do you have any idea when that will be, they'll go back in session?
Senate will be back in session in two weeks.
Okay. My then, my question will be the chief, within two weeks, if that bill does pass the House, have we, in the process, started doing that intersection study that we need to, to see where the red light camera up in that intersection?
Yes, we have. I've already talked to one vendor, ACS, who currently operates our railroad-grade crossing traffic enforcement program, photo enforcement program. They are going to be going out there in the next several weeks to look at the feasibility and do the preliminary work for IDOT with regards to the due diligence that needs to be done with regards to accidents, and also the potential for violations there. And the sake of fairness, I've reached out to another company that hasn't called me back yet, Redspeed. They have, they're based here in Lombard. They've also done some work. I'm going to get a competitive price from them and also have them do some research for the intersection. And lastly, with regards to, this would be an administrative function. We have allowed for that in this current budget, one way or another, because we were going to be experiencing with our administrative tow program, we've been having quite a few on that docket. So, yes, we have. We're waiting for the legislation. We're, we've got a couple of things in the works right now to implement that program, and none of that is costed out in the current budget with regards to revenues and/or expenditures.
But my question here is if it's the beginning of fiscal budget, are we not air marking anything into this year's budget for that?
As I previously stated, we have not put an expenditure in here. We have not put a revenue in for this. Once the legislation happens and we get the proposals on the table, then we will come back to you and lay it out to you as a, as a cost program, and make sure that it's running positive, and then look to put it in.
I do one follow-up?
Yes.
The items that I seen be, Project B, that needs to be reinstated, is the part-time crossing guards need to be reinstated, the CLEA accreditation, we need to keep that maintained, the, the.